Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our school committee meeting of August 24th, 2022. The first thing on our agenda is to approve today's agenda and see if anyone has any changes they'd like to recommend to the agenda. Hearing none, we'll consider the agenda approved. Next on the agenda is Assistant, the superintendent's update, and we'll turn it over to our acting superintendent, Janet Sheehan. Sheehan?
Thank you, Chair Rose Maron. We are very excited to report that we are ready to open our schools for staff on August 29. We'll be ready to open for our students in grades one to 12 on Wednesday, August 31st, and for our preschoolers and kindergarteners on Tuesday, September 6th. Please be reminded that the schools will be closed on Friday, September 2nd, and Monday, September 5th for the Labor Day weekend. Everyone has been working very hard to make sure we have a great start to the school year. We want to thank our teachers and support staff who've been preparing their classrooms to welcome students, thanks to our custodians, who have the schools ready with everything sparkling, and especially the floors. We'd like to thank our Director of Facilities, Bill Ritchie, and his staff. They have made sure that the school grounds are groomed and mulched, and they have been working all summer on maintenance projects. We are welcoming approximately 50 new teachers and approximately 25 more support staff members this year. Our new teachers participated in our teacher orientation this week. It is the largest number yet. All have been assigned mentors, and they enjoyed a meeting. They enjoyed meeting them, actually, at an event yesterday at Curry College that was planned by our mentor leaders. There were approximately 15 to 20 resignations over the past months, so we've been working very hard to fill those positions over the summer. We have the same challenges as school districts across the country as we continue to need additional substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, food service workers, and community school staffing. We would like to wish all the best to Food Services Director Jackie Morgan, who recently resigned after giving 22 years of exemplary service to the Milton Public Schools. Jackie has a transition plan in place that will allow us to open as usual, and she will be mentoring our next director. We want to thank Jackie for that, and we offer her very best wishes as she continues to pursue her career goals. We accepted letters of retirement from the following educators after many years of dedicated service to our Milton students and families. Kathy Mulligan, kindergarten teacher from the Cunningham School, just retired. This summer, Karen McGrath, special education teacher at the Pierce Middle School, retired, and Elaine Coughlin, instructional aide at the Tucker School, retired. We do have an enrollment update this evening. The total enrollment in the schools as of today is 4,378, and the breakdown is as follows. Collycott, 587 students. Cunningham, 639. Glover, 637. Tucker School, 459. The Pierce Middle School, 971 students. And Milton High School, 1,086 students. We have set dates for our school open houses. And again, this information will be, you know, will be in the blog and also in the principal's newsletters. The Pierce Middle School open house will be September 8th. Cunningham will be September 13th. Milton High School will hold its open house on September 15th. The Collycott School will have open house on September 22nd, along with the Tucker School on September 22nd. And the Glover School will have their open house on September 29. Another reminder that September 12th will be Applied Music Lessons Registration at Milton High School. That will, that will open at 7:00 PM. And on September 8th, 28th rather, sorry, at 6:00 PM, there is a Katie Greer presentation in the Milton High School auditorium. This has always been a very popular event for our parents and guardians. We'd also like to remind families that we have added four morning professional development days for teachers, which are late start days for students. And those dates, again, will be in our communications with families. Those dates are Friday, September 23rd, Friday, October 28th, Tuesday, January 17th, and Friday, March 31st. So please, you know, watch for, for your newsletters from the individual schools and updates also in the superintendent's blog. Special thanks go to Stephanie O'Keefe. I'd like to recognize her for maintaining communications with our families throughout the summer. Stephanie assists us with the blog, with Facebook and Twitter. She supports staff in creating the Samor newsletters, and she, she truly is a communications expert. In fact, she just created a, a video to welcome back our 500 staff members. So we're very excited about sharing that as our, as our teachers and support staff come into the auditorium on Monday morning. And a final thanks goes to our school committee, our parents and guardians, and the community at large for supporting the school year 2022 and 2023 budget. Thanks to you. You have given us the, the tools, the resources, and staffing that we need to meet our goals of the strategic plan, to address the needs of our students, and to focus on academic excellence. So we thank you for that. We're very excited about being so well-equipped as we start the new school year. Thank you.
I believe Claire is trying to...
You're on mute.
Is trying to enter the meeting, if she can be elevated?
She's, she's not in the attendee room anymore.
I also don't see anyone by that name.
Thank you, thank you, Assistant Superintendent, Acting Superintendent Sheehan, for your presentation. Appreciate hearing about all that's been done to prepare our schools to be open. Welcome, Claire. Good to see you. It's, it's wonderful to hear how many new staff we've been able to hire. That is, that is a, is that a record number for Milton Public Schools? It's, it's...
It is a record number, as far as I know. And I should have said thanks to Dr. McKinney for his, for his hard work and hiring as well. We've had, we've had, we've had a lot of support in the hiring process this year. We've had teachers who've come in and served on interview committees. They're referred to Central Office, and between Dr. McKinney and our Human Resource Specialist Laurie Dunn, they've done an outstanding job.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for, for all you've done to get, get our schools ready and, and for the whole team. Much appreciated. Any, any other comments or questions from school committee members? Move on. Dr. Carol?
Just, just a one quick question. I know that some members of the community have wondered about Tuesday, the 6th, as the first day of kindergarten and pre-K also being Election Day, where our, our schools are being used as polling places. And I was just wondering if you could remind people sort of the protocols that are in place to make sure that that runs smoothly and just reassuring parents that the, you know, the security concerns and everything else are, are all being addressed.
Yes, Member Carol, you did ask us to, to share that this evening. So I'm sorry I omitted that. Yes, we would like to reassure parents that, that things are very much in place for voting. There is guidance for the voters to enter the buildings. We have a police officer on duty. We have our custodial and teaching staff very vigilant. But there is a lot of guidance for those entering the school buildings in order to vote, and they, they, there are very specific entrances and exits for that. So I really think that, I think that the, the town sort of has a town pad around the setup and around security, and the school staff as well have been accustomed to having these voting days in the buildings. And we do everything we can to keep everyone safe and to, to have a successful voting day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on. In our agenda, we have a number of handbooks to, to approve. And I don't know if Superintendent Sheehan, if you would like to go through these with us, or, or since this is under your item on the agenda, we can go through one at a time and see if there are any comments or suggestions. And, and what, what I was thinking is, is we could, we could do this one of two ways. We could vote on each of them one at a time, or we could go through them all to see if there are changes or suggestions and vote on them all together. I don't know. I, I guess my inclination would be the latter, if, if that's okay with you all.
So just, just to, just to preface this process, we do have our, we, we do have our school attorney look at this, look at all of the handbooks, and make sure that our policies and practices are, are updated and in place. And that is very much a part of this process. Our, you know, our principals update their information every year and, and send them to us, and then we forward the information to the, to, to the, the school attorney. So we're, we're very careful about what we put out. That doesn't mean we may not have an error here or there, but, but they have been edited very carefully, and, and we, we hope that things are in place that, you know, that everyone can follow and, and sign off on.
Very good. Well, thank you. Let's, let's start at the top of the list, then, with the first being the elementary handbook. Are there any comments or suggested changes or questions? Hearing none, I will go on to the Pierce Middle School handbook. Any comments, suggestions, or questions? On the Pierce Middle School handbook. There's a lot to go through, I, I know, but it's, as, as Superintendent Sheehan said, there's, there's been a lot of, of a lot of work on these before they, they got to us, and they will be going out to our whole school community very, very soon. Okay. Next on our list is the Milton High School handbook. Any comments, questions, suggestions? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have the Milton Public Schools Staff Handbook. Any comments, questions, suggestions? No. And last, we have the Athletics Handbook. Any comments, questions, or suggestions on those? Okay. So if, oh, I see, Member Vargis. Member Vargis?
I just had a general question, and this was about residency. I also saw it in the blog this week. So I just wanted to ask, how have you managed this so far in terms of residency verification? I'd love to know, as a new, new member, I'd love to know more about the process and how often it's looked at.
Dr. McKinney, would you like to respond? Dr. McKinney has been very much involved with our registrar.
Great.
And, you know, I, I have, I have been involved in the past, but most recently, Dr. McKinney has been working closely with Serena Burke.
Awesome.
Yes, thank you. I already met with Serena and Marty McKenna, and Brad, our Information Systems Person. We meet monthly. We've been going through residency questions, student assignments. We had a meeting last week. It's a busy time. I know it's an anxious time for some parents, but we do follow the process that's outlined by policy and outlined on the website, and ensuring everybody is a resident of Milton who's coming into the schools. We also made a concerted effort to reach out to those that are attending some of the regional schools. They weren't aware of the process, so they're submitting their paperwork now. So I would say we're working on it on a daily basis and making sure that we're serving everybody in Milton the best we can.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Carol?
I think, so just, I think this is the right sort of cadence for it, that everyone establishes residency when they're entering pre-K if, if applicable, and then again kindergarten, or whichever grade they first enter Milton Public Schools, and then reestablish it again for sixth grade, and again for ninth grade. Right? So everybody has at least those checkpoints of reestablishing their residency, but then also, if anyone moves within the town of Milton, you have to reestablish your residency once again with your new address. And I, I saw in the hand, in the high school handbook, I thought it was really helpful that it, that section links to the full residency policy. I didn't see that in the other handbooks. There are different versions explaining and outlining the policy, which is good. But I, I did notice that that seemed helpful because it can sort of lead people to where they may find more detail about exceptions to the residency policy, you know, to learn whether or not one of those may apply to their family circumstance or not. So just, I'm not suggesting that the handbook be rewritten to link to all the different policies, but I did notice that seemed kind of helpful for people if they want to learn more in the electronic version.
Okay. Superintendent Sheehan?
If I heard correctly, we have about 30 families right now who have changed residency, who have moved, and, and many within Milton. But we, we don't always know whether they're still in Milton or not. And we understand that this is really an inconvenience for many parents, and we feel badly about that. You know, it's a lot of paperwork, and, and it is inconvenient and time-consuming. But when we consider, we sit at the cost of, of educating our students, and we have increasing enrollment, and, and crowded schools, we really have to be vigilant. So we hope that parents will understand and, and follow those, those residency guidelines.
Makes sense. Okay. Any other questions on the handbooks? If not, I think we'll bring this to a vote. And I think I will combine the five into one motion. The motion would be to approve the 2022, 23 Milton Public Schools Elementary Handbook, Pierce Middle School Handbook, Milton High School Handbook, Milton Public Schools Staff Handbook, and Athletic Handbook. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. And we'll do a roll call vote. Member White?
Yes.
Member Vargis? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Member Ross Danny?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron, yes. That's unanimous. Very good. Thank you all, and thank you to the whole team of people that were involved in putting these handbooks together. There's a lot of work that went into it, and, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you for your approval.
Sure. So next on our agenda, we have Citizen Speak. We have 15 minutes set aside for Citizen Speak, and we have three minutes per person. If there are people in our viewing audience who would like to speak tonight, if you could please raise your hand, and we will promote you, and be happy to hear you.
Would, would you like me to promote the people?
Yes, that would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, it looks like I do not have the rights. So I'm not sure if somebody at Milton Access TV could promote Mr. Funling. So we have Mr. Jay Funling. Mr. Funling, whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is May Funling, and this is my sister Josie.
Um, hi, my name is May Funling and this is my sister Josie. I'm in ninth grade and I live at thirty-nine Sias Lane. Currently in the Milton Public Schools, we have twenty-minute-long lunches depending on the school. This is not long enough to get our food, sit down, and finish lunch. Me and my sister made a survey last year, a hundred and twenty-two students filled it out. And seventy-seven percent of people who took the survey said they felt rushed most or all of the time. We think it would be best if lunch was at least thirty minutes long. CDC says that sufficient seat time is significantly associated with schools providing at least thirty minutes for lunch. Longer lunches in schools give students better nutrition so they can pay more attention in school. We hope you bring this proposal to the superintendent.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate hearing from you. Do we have anyone else with a hand raised?
I don't see anybody else.
Very good. All right, well then I think we will move on, uh, in our agenda. Uh, next, uh, item is, um, Chair's Report. And the first thing on the agenda is to talk about the school committee goals, um, that we discussed at our, um, school committee retreat. And, um, I'm just wondering if we can share this. Superintendent Dexter, do you have the ability to share documents? I don't know. Sorry, I should have thought of this before.
I do, but...
What documents are you trying to share? Sorry, that...
I don't have...
You don't have it?
That on my computer. If you wanted to quickly email it to me, I could probably pull it up.
Yeah, yeah.
I can try to share it. I have it right here. Would you like me to try it?
Yeah, sure. Oh, there you go. Wonderful. Thank you very much. So, um, as you see, that's wonderful. Thank you. Uh, I think we have four goals. Facilities, uh, which you see, um, up top. What are the other ones? Uh, measurable goal alignment, uh, budget, and communication and community engagement. Um, and these were goals that we discussed at our retreat. And then, um, each, um, each of the goals, uh, was drafted by, uh, different members of the school committee. And this is our first chance to take a look, um, at these, uh, draft goals together. And, uh, I just want to open it up, uh, to see if there are any, um, suggestions for changes or thoughts or questions and comments about, um, how we might proceed here.
I'm looking on my phone to raise my hand, but here we go.
Okay. Member Ross Denny, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, uh, make sure that we take the time to at least try to put them into SMART goal format so that, um, it's very clear to the public and to the people for whom we expect to operationalize or be partners with us in operationalizing the goal. So they're very clear about what's expected and by when. Um, I don't think we should wordsmith this during this committee meeting. But, um, maybe there's some one-on-one contact we can make that's within, um, the last general law about how do we make these, um, more compliant with that format.
Very good. Any, any, um, questions or comments about the, um, the content of the goals that are drafted, um, that anybody would like to share? Uh, Dr. Carol?
Um, I agree with Member Ross Denny and I think, um, so my understanding is that we will bring these back to vote on them not until our next meeting, right? So that we still have time of the next couple of weeks to continue kind of working to do that formatting. I think I, I do have a question about the framing of the measurable goal alignment, uh, goal. I completely agree with, um, the, sort of what is expressed here as a goal for our district. And I'm, I also think we can keep honing this goal to be, this is probably part of that SMART goal alignment process to kind of make it clear what the action steps of the school committee is, you know, are in the, um, purview of this, of this goal. And, and that, you know, what is the school committee doing? And then hopefully, how is this being reflected in the superintendent's goals and district goals? So I think that's just something I'm still a little bit, um, wondering about, that, that we could continue to address in, in the, you know, formatting of the goals. I think the other, um, and this came up in our retreat discussion. The other goal areas are a little more straightforward in terms of, um, kind of action steps for school committee. Um, and this goal is so important and a little bit less clear-cut in terms of, you know, what the school committee is doing and what members of the administration are doing.
Member, Dr. Carol, thank you for raising that because when we were, um, discussing this during the retreat, I want to say the facilitator shared that, you know, we have to be very clear about what our authority is, especially, um, around supervision. Because this is technically something that we would not implement. So, the, it's as the supervisor of the superintendent, it's our responsibility to make sure that this work actually happens. This just adds more clarity around what it's, what the expectation is for what it will look like when it's done. Because the only other option would be to say, you know, as the supervisor, ensure that these, um, measurable goals are incorporated. This just adds a, a level of detail, um, in terms of what the expected outcome should look like. So I welcome any feedback to ensure both pieces, the, um, supervisory piece as well as, um, the clarity piece are both incorporated into what ultimately this goal.
Yeah, I agree with everything you just said. I, I think maybe that's something that could be added in is the connect, like the supervision is the, um, path for this to occur, um, in, in like the work of the school committee. But, yeah, I, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah, and I wonder, I wonder whether, um, there are a couple thoughts that I have about that, you know, in terms of our role as monitoring the, the growth and progress towards these goals, um, that, that we should include in the, in the language of this goal. Um, and that it, it also relates to the, the work of the Metrics Advisory Team that, um, that will be coming with recommendations for us. And, um, that is included on our, uh, draft calendar, which is the next item on our agenda. But, um, but the, these are, these are all related. And, um, I think the, the thinking in terms of the calendar was that the, the Metrics Advisory Team would make their recommendations once we have the, the data available to us, is particularly the, the Spring twenty-twenty-two MCAS data. I guess we have the raw data, um, now, but we still need, uh, additional, um, perspective on, on that raw data to, and be able to interpret it properly. But that, um, the superintendent's goals that would be incorporating those, um, those, um, goals, those growths and, and progress goals, um, would, would be based upon the recommendations of the Metrics Advisory Team. That would be incorporating the things that you've listed here in, in the goal, which is, which are great. I think we're, we're clear about, about that. Um, and I guess the last thing I, I, I do wonder about is, is about what, what we've got for the Equity Audit Survey Results. And, um, that somehow that, that will need to be, um, clarified about what, what specific goals will be set relative to, um, the results of the, of that audit. Any other comments?
Does anyone want to look at any of the other goals? I can scroll however people would like. This is the budget goal. Um, and then on this one, uh, definitely open to input. I know this was one that we didn't have as much time at the retreat to actually discuss. Uh, so these are some ideas and would be interested in what other ideas people may have.
Any comments, suggestions? You know, we can, we can take these and, um, since we're, um, if you have comments that, that you'd like to send, uh, to me in writing, we could, we can do, uh, that, um, as well as, as, you know, any comments that you, um, might want to share today. And then we'll bring it back, um, to our, um, our next meeting, I guess, um, is where we have this discussion scheduled. Any further comments? I think also the, uh, the facilities goal that was at the top, um, Dr. Carol, I definitely want to get, um, Member White's and Member Miranda's comments on that since they'll be heading up the, um, Facilities Advisory Committee meeting this year, um, that committee this year. So if you have any comments, uh, on that, um, please, please pass them along and, um, and, um, Member Ross Denny, uh, may call on your assistance to help try to work these into SMART goals. It's not a strength of mine, I must confess. But, um, I think it would be, uh, great to, uh, have some help getting that, getting that done. So, um, we don't have any other comments on that. We'll move along to the calendar. And, um, you receive the calendar in your, um, in your packet of materials. And, um, Dr. Carol, I wonder if, if I could trouble you again to, to share that document for, for me. I'm just, uh, having trouble navigating, uh, there we go. Thank you so much. So, um, a lot, there were a lot of changes made in this calendar after our, uh, discussion at our, our retreat. And I just wanted to walk you through just to be sure, um, you see the things that were incorporated. As you see, we're, here we are at the twenty-fourth. We've got our first discussion of school committee goals. And then it's on the calendar for, uh, another discussion and follow-up vote at our next meeting, um, on September seventh. And we also have scheduled for September seventh, a, um, a data presentation, uh, by Vivu. And I'm not sure if she'll be bringing anyone else with us, um, with her. But to, uh, review the twenty-twenty-two, uh, year-end data from the end of last school year, which we really haven't, um, gotten to see, uh, to be able to get a perspective on, on the growth that happened over the course of last year. As we move through, um, the, uh, calendar, we have also included, uh, the four public forums that we talked about. They're scheduled in between school committee meetings. Uh, we have the, um, and they're, um, to be focused on the, uh, the pillars of our strategic plan. So the first one being October sixth will be a public forum on personalized learning. We continue on through, uh, our, in October twelfth meeting, uh, you'll see there, uh, we've, we've plugged in the, a report from the Metrics Advisory Team. We're hoping, uh, there's an asterisk there that we will have the, the data from Desi, uh, by that time to be able to really process, uh, the results of the, um, the MCAS, um, exams from last year. And, um, but that will be moved if, if that information isn't, isn't yet available then. But then we also put in that same meeting, uh, a first discussion about the superintendent's goals so that the two were, will be, uh, related to, um, to each other that in sort of along the lines of, of our discussion on our last, uh, set of goals that, that we're really wanting the metrics, um, to guide our goal setting. And, um, so that will give us a chance to have our first discussion about the superintendent's goals at that meeting and on October twelfth. And then a follow-up, um, on a discussion and, uh, a hopeful vote on superintendent's goal at the following meeting. And then we have, uh, site council presentations that begin, um, October twelfth is the first one with Pierce, uh, Site Council. Then October twenty-sixth, uh, we have Collicott coming, um, as we move into November. Got Milton High School and Tucker School in the same evening, November ninth. Uh, our second public forum on, uh, another pillar of our strategic plan, State from Supportive Schools. Uh, November sixteenth, um, Glover Site Council and beginning, um, presentation and discussion about our FY twenty-four budget. Our special town meeting, uh, fall town meeting will be, uh, December five, six, and eight, uh, that we now know. So that'll be, that was fit in there. And then, uh, December seventh is when we have targeted for the, um, the next data presentation. for the the next data presentation from Vivu. And again, whatever folks from the leadership team that would be appropriate to bring along to talk about the the data from the fall of of this school year. Moving through December, we've got Cunningham Site Council and more discussions of the budget and including a meeting with the warrant committee, which still needs to be determined. January 11th, we have a public forum on the equity pillar of our strategic plan. And the, we'll have further discussion about our our budget in January. And we've also added in the evaluation mid-cycle and end-of-cycle evaluations for superintendent that that seem to catch us a little short this year. So we've gotten them calendared in. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet those goals. We've got program studies. And then our fourth public forum on February 8th will be on our budget. And that will be combined with our annual budget hearing. And we've got some openings in there before we get to the reorganization meeting in late April and town meeting. And then the typical end-of-year, end-of-cycle summit of evaluation and retiree reception and and votes, school choice and and the like. So that's, that's basically the calendar for the year. This is, this is kind of a working document for us. So it will be, you know, updated as as we need to. But I I hope you feel that the the comments and suggestions that were made at at our retreat were, you know, appear here and that you're, to your satisfaction. And if there are any questions or comments, feel free. A member of our geez.
Hi. I just had one question. I mean, there's so much great information here. And I was wondering, how can we kind of promote this a little bit more to get more attendees to attend our meetings? And especially and as well as the public forums? Is there a way to publish this information? Is there, you know, so that people know what, you know, things that parents are interested in as a way to bring in the community? I think it'd be great. I'd love to hear some suggestions if there are ways to do that.
That's a great idea. And we can, we can post this on our our page on the Milton Public Schools website, just so that every, we'll have to add a note to it to say that this, you know, can be changed as as things change. But but it does give people a full sense of the year. But I, but I also think, a member of our geez, that your your point about particularly advertising our public forums, I I think we really should make a a definite effort to put that together in in a way that that lets everyone know about about these forums happening, when they'll be, what the topics are and the like.
And I know a lot of work goes into them. So it would be great for our community to be aware of how much work goes into it and what we're doing, you know? So and I, I think it would avoid a lot of like stress and all of those things if people are in the loop from the very beginning.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Carol?
Thanks. I I would just like to say, yes, I really appreciate how our conversation from the retreat I see reflected in the updates that we've made to the calendar. So I definitely appreciate the openness to kind of doing some things a little bit differently and also just very intentional, you know, way of sort of including the important updates that we will be getting. And I'm looking forward to those data presentations and and so on. And I I also just have a quick question. Wondering whether we have any updates yet about the hybrid opportunity to sort of like the format of the meetings? If there's any information we can share about where and how these meetings will be taking place?
Yeah, we don't have any updates yet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We we did have a a meeting with folks from Milton Access and folks from the town side and the Council on Aging and Select Board and Town Administrator, and talked about the the possibilities. But we didn't really come to a definitive conclusion. So I'd say it's still a work in progress. Hopefully, we'll know, we'll know that soon. But that that continues to be our goal is to have, to be able to meet in a space that is set up to to do as a hybrid meeting so that, so that we could be in person, but people could still join us remotely and participate remotely if if they so choose.
Thanks.
Member Ross Denny?
I want to echo what Dr. Carol shared about how thoughtful our calendar is for this year and reflects some of the things that, many of the things that we discussed during our retreat. Once our goals are finalized, I would love to incorporate checkpoints so we can assess our progress over time in terms of our ability to stay on track. Because we might learn that, you know, we might have to adjust the deadline or we have to do a course correction because we've learned something new. But once we have some reasonable dates, I would love to have those check-ins incorporated into the calendar.
That sounds like a great idea. The, we have the the superintendent evaluation components in here, but I don't know, those are, they're just one in the mid-year and one at the end of the year. And I don't know, I guess it will kind of depend on what we come up with in terms of our goals, whether whether that will be enough or whether we need something more specific. So let's, let's work on that and see, see where that goes. And and we can update this. I I really see this as our working document to be sure that we know what we're, what we're going to try to do and get to this year. But but I think we also need to remain flexible. That things, things will come up that we didn't anticipate and and the like. But yeah, I I think that's a great idea, Member Ross Denny. Any other comments, questions about calendar? All right. Thank you. Just take a look here. So next on our agenda is Finance Subcommittee. Member White?
Sure. We just have one warrant to approve tonight. It's warrant number five dated August 18th, 2022 in the amount of $117,531.14. Do I have a second on that warrant?
I second.
Okay. So do a roll call vote. Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Chair Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member of our geez?
Yes.
And me, yes. So that's unanimous. And that is the end of our finance tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. We've received three sets of minutes for July 6th, July 29th, and our August 3rd retreat. I looked through them. I believe that we were all there for all of them. So if anyone has any comments or corrections for any of those minutes, can you speak now? And if not, we'll move to a vote. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to add these all three into one vote since we were all here for all of these. So I would move to approve the minutes for July 6th, July 29th, and August 3rd. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, do a roll call vote. Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member of our geez?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maron, yes. Very good. Thank you. Next meeting agenda items. As we just saw on our calendar, we have another discussion of our school committee goals. And I just lost the calendar. It's in here somewhere. But are there any other items that that anybody knows of right now that you'd like to add to that agenda?
The other thing listed is just the spring data presentation that we just talked about.
Yes, great. Thank you.
And then the back-to-school, you know, updates. Like, I know, for example, Policy Subcommittee does not meet for the first time until September 13th. So we will not have that on our next agenda.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carol. Okay, so next on our agenda is moving into executive session. And I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy for collective bargaining with the Milton Educators Association and AFSMI for the custodial and food service employees. Since to do so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The school committee will return to open session for the purpose of voting on Unit A and AFSMI bargaining agreements and will adjourn directly from open session. So take a roll call vote to move into executive session. Member Ross Denny?
Yes. Do we need a second? Did you need a second for that?
Thank you. Yes, I need a second too. Could you do that too?
I'll second. I'll second it and I'll make my first vote.
Wonderful. Thank you. Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member of our geez?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maron, yes. Very good. So we'll see you in executive session. And we've been advised to turn off our, to mute our microphones and turn off the video and Zoom. And we'll go into the Google link for executive session. And we'll return to open session when we're done. So we'll see you there.
Very good, thank you, welcome back. We're back in now in open session and we have left on the agenda is two motions related to our contracts. Make the first motion made to approve the memorandum of agreement between Milton School Committee and the APSME Council 393, Local 1395 for the period July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you, okay, we'll take a roll call vote on that. Dr. Carroll?
Yes.
Member Varghese?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yeah.
Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maron, yes, okay, thank you, that one's unanimous. And the second motion is made to approve the memorandum of agreement between Milton School Committee and the Milton Educators Association for the period July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. You have a second please?
Second.
Thank you, take a roll call vote, Member Carroll, Dr. Carroll?
Yes.
Member Varghese?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yeah.
Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maron, yes. Very good, so those were both unanimous and oops, and I believe that is the up. Okay, I believe that is all we have on our agenda and if I could get a motion to adjourn?
Janet has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to share when I was leaving executive session Joe came on. That's why I was delayed.
Oh dear.
And he wanted me to apologize to everyone. He felt badly but he thought 8:30 was a reasonable time to join it, join the executive session.
Oh dear.
So I just wanted to be sure that you all knew that, he wanted you to know.
Thank you very much, well, timing is everything. Very good, all right, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Second, all right, and roll call vote, Dr. Carroll?
Yes.
Member Varghese?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And Member White?
Yes.
And Chair Rose Maron, yes, very good, all right, thank you everyone, have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.